So welcome to the Corporation of Centauri Kirk Lake Committee of Whole Meeting on October 29th. Approval of the agenda.
It's moved by Councilor Stacy White, seconded by Councilor Dennis Perrier. The council approves the agenda for its committee, the whole meeting of October 29th, 2019 as presented.
All in favor? Okay. Declaration of pecuniary interest? None noted. Petitions and delegations? There isn't any? Okay. Alright, so reports of municipal officers and communication manager planning and line development.
Okay, so this report was actually presented to council on October 1st. And as a result of that meeting, we are holding a committee of a whole meeting tonight to hear comments from the public. There has been some written submissions received, but for the most part, all I want to do is open this to the audience and give them an opportunity to voice any concerns they may have that they'd like us to take a look at and bring further a recommendation to council for consideration.
So the procedure for the public comment section will be each speaker's got five minutes to speak. They've got, they can speak once and we need to have your name and address stated before you start talking. Okay. Anybody up?
It hasn't been deemed in our parking bylaw yet. That is one of the recommendations we're proposing to council. That, that hasn't been looked at yet. Uh, it could be. Yeah, it could be. Yeah.
Okay, uh, the next question is why are morning tickets on if you were starting in the first? Every northern municipality has that rule. Why do you just sort of use your discretion? During the winter, tickets are totally must be included. It's a bylaw. Plowing is interfered with and not discussed. My last question is lower the speed limit on Allen as it is often a raceway during certain hours. It is a very long straight stretch from Governor Road to the school or the hall pass. And there's a hill between third and fourth that we've got difficulty getting out. Out during the winter because we get caught and never, never left, turning left. And then coming over the hill at a very inappropriate speed. Something happened. It's just difficult to cross Allen to the west side of the sidewalk. Just need this interruption. Can we have either speed lower or the stop at seven? Something has to be there, speed bump. I don't know what to ask you, but it's a problem. Thank you.
Thanks Patty.
Thank you. Anybody else? Five minutes Danny. Thank you. Thank you. Any more comments concerning traffic and parking? Sure.
My understanding is that that was a council direction to give people time to get into the right frame set of the mind and that. Uh, that's just my understanding. That should be done.
Yeah, I opened up the mic already, so. Counselor Owens got a question for you.
Owen, not Owens. I have a question. I, I agree with you with, with people parking across the sidewalks in the, like when it's non-snow season. Okay, I have the same complaint. I used to walk to work along Second Street every day and had the same problem. My question is, have you phoned the works department and asked for an activity request to be opened? So it would be forwarded to our bylaw officer who in turn, if they found them in violation of parking across the sidewalk, would be fined. Have you done that?
Yes, I have.
When did you do that? This year?
For four years.
I know, I know. It's, it's been going on a lot more than four years. Yeah, but, but. Yeah, but the proper procedure to go through is to phone 705-567-9365, extension 321, and ask for an activity request to be opened. That way it can be tracked and you can phone back and you can find out exactly what happened. Plus that person or the, the person in charge of that department can pull it up and see that it was done, what was done, or see that it wasn't done and go to the appropriate employees and say, why was nothing done?
I asked for a response in writing and I have to say, so I can show you the emails.
No, no, that's.
I didn't do that. I didn't ever, I don't know. What else do you need to do when you contact Allen Floyd and give order with this? Well, the people on Second Street from Allen to Dunfield.
Yeah.
Raised the big stick, like up the efficient sign so that they would have sidewalks.
Yeah.
But maybe we did the sidewalk.
I lost my sidewalks, but that's okay.
I went to Bill Dorson and I raised a car about four and a half sidewalks on Tower. Nope, that, that, this is the wrong way to do it. So the people on Second Street go out their sidewalks so that, you know what? Don't park on them.
Okay.
And I don't care what time you go down that street, there is somebody parked across the struck sidewalk. It will just continue.
I know.
Nobody does anything about it.
I know, but.
And yes, I have complained. This is year four.
Okay, and Andrew, what I was trying to do was to explain to you a, a procedure that was put in place in the last two years, Ashley? One year? Which now there is a tracing system for the town. So when an employee, or when a rate payer comes in with a complaint, then that rate payer can phone back and it can be traced. The bosses can trace what happened or what didn't happen and approach the, the, the proper employees. You can then call me as a counselor and tell me that happened and ask Ashley, I have been in there following up on different requests that were put through the proper procedure.
Okay, I emailed Casey Buckers. I've emailed the mayor about parking on the sidewalk and this is year four. So I'm listening to safety, but nothing is done.
Listen?
I'm sorry.
Yeah, just, I, I, in the emails we exchanged a few months ago, didn't I get that it was resolved?
No, it wasn't.
Well.
It has not been resolved. It's okay, it has not been resolved. This is year four.
Okay, so I can say from a bylaw enforcement perspective, when people park on sidewalks, you have to catch them in the act and ticket them, right? So we did have a little bit of a challenge with bylaw enforcement for the last couple of years. We've had someone full-time staff, that person has, has vacated the position. We introduced tips, we went probably eight or nine months without active bylaw enforcement. So there was a, a, a lack of it. Um, we've recently had a transition between tips and pads, who's bought out tips. Uh, so there again, there was another little bit of transition where we didn't have many people on the ground. So there has been a lack of bylaw enforcement, which is why you're not seeing something happen right away.
It's not just bad, Ashley.
Yeah.
You drive around town, I'll give you an example. The intersection on La Belle and Taylor. Went and changed that to a four-way stop. For whatever reason, I have no idea, slowed down traffic. We did that.
To be fair, we did not do that.
Of the council here.
Yes, okay, so just.
If they slowed down traffic. You have people parking within two feet of the stop sign. Like come on. It's nine meters from stop sign. You go down, you pull over Second, First Street to belong to Allen. It's parked right up to the intersection. Nobody gives, it's, and there's people, you can't even pull out onto the intersection. You gotta stick your, most of your vehicles so far out before you can see down the street. There's just, it's a free for all. And this has been going on and on and on. You can say to me, whoever was the bylaw officer who isn't, they just don't seem to be able to drive around town and have a look at things. Drive down any sidewalk in this town and there is going to be either vegetation, either a vehicle on it, somebody's trees on it, or whatever. I asked for the sidewalk to be a ten-foot pile last year from Allen to Duncan. You know what I was told? They have to trim some twigs. Was it because of the cost anymore? Was it because we have to trim some twigs? Like come on. I, I just, you guys just keep going backwards.
Counselor Owen.
Yeah, that Taylor and La Belle intersection was brought up at the police board meeting last night, which I'm a member of. Our acting staff sergeant noted that prior to that being a four-way street, there had been multiple accidents there. And I know there were because I was still working at the time and I went and photographed them. Since that's been turned into a four-way stop, there has not been one accident at that intersection. So yes, maybe we slowed the traffic down, but we also made the, the previous council also made the town a safer place to live.
Thank you. Any more comments for tracking, uh, parking and traffic?
My hearing is very, very good. We haven't made a mic here in the last, the last committee. It's year four.
Can you? Just before you start, before you start, before you start, can you state your name and your address, please? Can you state your name and address, please?
Sydney, you were just, one hard event for me.
Thank you.
Uh, I sent a letter to council in 2007 in regards to traffic. And we have, I've been here, at that time I was here for about forty-six years. Now I've been here for fifty-eight, I see a lot of the past. We had the past three councils that we had here, uh, with the office that can do it. And, and I don't know how they, why the states that came up the, they don't have traffic there. We have six streets built or seven streets, I guess you might say, six and a half streets that are going from north to south in order to have the traffic going on on La Belle. And the case where we have a four-way stop. The traffic going, it didn't get the three curries, it's three days high on St. Anthony's Avenue. Anyway, uh, I, the reason why I, I brought that up in 2007 was because my wife was working by the house there and it was off garden. And they were doing some work on Hardy Avenue. And, and, uh, there was one lane and one road went through there, high speed road going all over. So I decided to have a look at the area. And it was hard, hard to find the stops. They were yield. And I was talking to the Ontario provincial district, uh, through the, uh, the, uh, district. And, uh, I said, there aren't these stops signed around the corner. And one of them, I have to say this, is, and, uh, they, they're doing a great job. By the way, they told me, they said, there aren't there stops, there are stops here, there's. I thought there was a lot there. Anyway, I agree with the feels that we have to come down there at the corner. Uh, the street there, I've gone from the Hardy four-way stop and, uh, able. I think people may have a copy of my letters. Uh, and you'd be wondering around the school, I spoke to the, the, uh, the people there who were helping to drop the cards. And I know the one who was there a few years ago, it all hit him inside. But in general, I'm going through my long letters there, something has to be out inside. I think we carried a four-way stop. Inglehart has four-way stop over there. Uh, and, uh, also the, the other, the other one there that has a lot there is, uh, uh, I think I can easily, I'm just outside of, um, um, way, uh, can't believe, I'm pretty well, I don't think I handled it. Yes, I did. And, uh, the plan they did, uh, sorry, again, like, yeah, there were a couple of days of the count on, on the way to Sudbury. Uh, not to be, but, uh, I'd say.
Smoothie.
Good one?
Smoothie.
Yeah. They, they got more, they have a fair number now and a lot of the rest have to be, they've got to be more forward there. So, the general bottom line is, uh, we need, I, 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 the last time I was there, it was a half a fifty for those nine people. And unfortunately, I go up to fifty, but it's a poor foundation, that's what I have in my life right now. And I would like to, I would appreciate it, because all this stuff that needs to be addressed here. But the note of my term that I, I normally do, what I'm talking about is, in this world that we have, we're in a very high-tech world and it's a fast lane, very fast road.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Anybody else? Counselor Owen?
Yeah. Sid, can you hear me?
Oh, it's, okay, is it on there?
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, I've had hearing aids and I've had problems.
I'll, I'll come stand beside you and yell in your ear if I have to. We did discuss that intersection at the police board meeting last night as well. It's not an easy solution because if we put four-way stop signs there, when it's busy, we're gonna back traffic up across the railway track. And I know common sense says, and you wouldn't and I wouldn't, park stop on a railway track. But we both know there are people that will because an easy solution would have been a four-way stop there. But with the railway track, now we gotta take that into consideration. So we, we did discuss it with the staff sergeant at length and we're, we're continuing to look at that. Okay? Did you hear me?
Yes.
Are we still friends?
What's the first thing? Uh, you know, that's, excuse me, I don't know. And then, you know, as we, you know, the matter of course, you always say, whenever you make your turn to match where you are, probably how you, that you're not so. That's a full thought. But I really, I would really like to talk to you. But if you were over, over by the school and they had a three-way stop there, I'd be here. I appreciate that we, we, uh, uh.
Just, just a quick comment for the railroad track. I've got pictures here when I heard about that last night. I did some quick research when I was living in Sudbury. And there's train tracks wherever you go in Sudbury. Like you cannot go left and right and they go by at all hours of the night. And I've got pictures here of, uh, the main line, the main Canadian Pacific line that crosses on Fruit Road. And they've got a stop sign, which is probably a quarter of the distance of what this one would be. And I've got, after about five examples, I stopped printing them. But there are examples here of the train, like the stop sign being like right at the train track. So if they can do it in Sudbury where these rail lines are used a lot more than what they are in Kirkland Lake, then I think that a four-way stop, to, to use the, the excuse of a train track, I think is, we can move past that. There's gotta be another reason for it to stop it. Counselor Owen?
Yeah, that was just brought up as a concern. It wasn't saying, no, we can't do a four-way stop there. That, that was just brought up by the, uh, staff sergeant as a concern.
After you take your thoughts on it, anyway, and what we deserve, then, uh, what they made, we're, we're delivering a fast lane, there's everything to, uh, to deal with, half a week. Anyway, uh, I'm hoping to get, get a phone call, see what they think. Well, one last question. Can, can we hear these, uh, O P P's, uh, having their, their, these indicators, or does this thing down the block, if you, uh, are, are you doing it on the off in, in that town, especially on Queens?
Again, the O P P does not, uh, tell us their day-to-day operations, for obvious reasons. Um, the O P P has been very good in, when we've approached them with a concern of putting a targeted, uh, a focused patrol. Sorry, they don't like the word targeted, I don't know why. A focused patrol in different areas that we've asked for, but in terms of their day-to-day policing operations, it's kinda like council and, and, and staff at town. We have managers to look after it, and we, and the O P P has their own, they're separate. But if we ask them, if there was a specific area of concern, their past history indicates to me they would put a focused patrol on there.
Any more, excuse me, any more comments from the public? Have a quick question then. Last year, we, I believe we voted on a bylaw to ban parking on the west, no, yes, west side of Duncan by Sacred Heart, going up the hill. No signs are up.
They were put up last Monday.
Like, last Monday, like, yesterday Monday?
Like, last Monday, right, Steve? Yep. They're temporary signs for now, there's new signs being ordered.
At Sacred Heart?
Yes. On the fence line.
Okay. I won't argue with you on that one. I leave there, like, two, three times a day. I have yet to see them, people are still parking there though, but I will
Okay.
Take a quick ride tomorrow, or after council, and go have a look.
And from a bylaw enforcement perspective, we are going to see a little bit more of that happen within the next coming weeks. That's, we, we did start the process up with paths, uh, last Wednesday, so
Okay.
They are on the street.
Okay. Councillor Owen?
Yeah, I just wanted to comment on the Allen Avenue situation. Um, I've been reluctant to comment, because that's my neighborhood, but now that it's been brought up, yes, there are definitely times when speeding is a problem on Allen Avenue, when there are certain events at the complex, um, that are well-attended. The people tend to rush out to their car and try to get in front of the rush behind it, and that is a concern. I have to pull onto Allen from Third Avenue all the time, or Third Street, sorry, I'm not in Engleheart, Third Street. And even in my, my pickup truck, I can't always pick up the car that's coming up the hill. It's not quite as bad in the summer, because you know when you could put your foot on the gas, you're gonna have traction. But in the wintertime, it's a real crapshoot, because you don't know if there's a car in that blind spot unless you go to the stop sign, stay there thirty seconds, then you, and watch, then you know there's no car there, then it doesn't matter whether you've got good traction or not. But there is a, a problem there, and whether a stop sign at Second Street would help, or Third Street, I don't know, but there's definitely a, a safety problem on Allen and, and the side streets there. Thank you.
Councillor Ivanoff?
I know, everybody hates speed bumps, but you know what, that's probably the solution for some of those, because you can't have a policeman there all the time, and you can't, you know, putting up stop signs is just that, you're putting up stop signs, and if people disregard the stop sign, you still don't have, you know, at least speed bumps would slow traffic down, and you could put them at every intersection if that's what it took to try and get, you know, try and clean that up a bit. And, you know, same the other places where there's, uh, people that are speeding. Um, Second Street, some of those areas were, you know, you know, what do they call it, the silent policeman?
Just a comment regarding speed bumps, this is something that we did look at when we did the, I think it was a stop sign at Goodfish coming down onto Tweedsmere, and we, I think the general consensus from council and from our staff was that it, it inhibits winter maintenance, it causes problems with winter maintenance when we're plowing, so just something to consider, and I'll put that in my comments in the report for next meeting.
But we have lots of speed bumps in town already.
Yes, but they get covered up in the winter. I've got, Ashley, I've got this example, again, in
We have thousands.
In Sudbury, they've got these plastic thingamajobs that go in the middle of the road, a, and they slow you down. Like, I was on the charter there last week, and trying to navigate a school bus through this is quite challenging, not that I should be speeding with a school bus, but they do slow people down, so it might be something to, at least for the summer months, that we can look into that would
Yeah, Joanne had mentioned it to me this morning, and I was, I had asked whether or not we should call Sudbury and see how it's going. I think for right now, Sudbury's just doing it as a trial basis, right?
But they're all over the place. They're all, they're all over the city.
Okay. I'll, I'll make a phone call and see how it's working.
Councillor Adams?
Yep, uh, part of this process, uh, from our last meeting on this, was, uh, to get input from the health unit, and I know that, uh, they have some great tools available on, uh, speed reduction, uh, tools. Uh, they certainly, uh, go to that European standard when it comes to that two-plus-one highway and other items, so, uh, certainly, uh, some input from them on this. I think that's what we're expecting as well on this, so, uh, they have some great ideas that just don't involve speed bumps too, so, it's pretty good.
I just wanted to let everybody know that we did get, received some written comments, uh, from Helen Gordon, Brian Colhane, Matt Levesque, Sid Hamden, and Rachel Bronson. These are attached to the agenda, and they were also brought up at the, the police service board meeting last night. There were a couple more that came in this afternoon, from Jean Snowden, and Colleen Fagan, and Kathy Barnes. Those have been distributed to council and to staff, but they just have not been updated to, to the agenda at this point in time, but those comments are there for everybody.
I have, uh, a motion that's moved by councillor Stacey White, seconded by councillor Dennis Perrier. The council, uh, no, that's not it. We're not approving. Number two. That we're adjourning the committee of whole, uh, to a regular council meeting for October twenty-ninth.
All in favor? Carrie?
Do you guys want a five-minute recess?
Okay. Four-and-a-half-minute recess.
So, Corporation Town of Kirkland Lake, uh, regular meeting of October twenty-ninth. Before we start, there's a notice here, council has called a special meeting on Wednesday, October thirtieth, two thousand and nineteen, for the sole purpose of holding an in-camera meeting to discuss one issue concerning identifiable persons. So, moment of silence. So, we've got approval of the agenda.
So, I have a motion moved by councillor Stacey White, seconded by councillor Dennis Perrier. The council approves the agenda for its regular meeting of October twenty-ninth, two thousand and nineteen, as presented.
Before we vote on this one, since we were just handing out, or two, or, excuse me, since we were just handed two documents that, uh, need to be read, I would like to defer this one to a future meeting, so we would have time to go through what was handed to us and grasp it, and then come back for discussion on it.
So, you're asking for a deferral?
Yes.
Which one?
Uh, item
Six, one.
Six, one, A. On this one, we just got handed documents, I'd like to be able to read this and grasp it before we get, uh, we go forward with this. Councillor Adams?
Couldn't some of these items just be explained further in detail during this process?
Councillor White?
Uh, normally, when we are given documents, um, we do have a heads-up, so, because this was handed to us a moment before we opened this meeting, I too would like to, to defer it, to go over it. Um, it is five or six pages long, um, that's not something that I can review or, uh, research right now, so I would like it deferred as well until next meeting, November fifth, I believe.
And my apologies, but I did not realize that the other report was on the council agenda until Thursday, just a few hours before it was being published, and I was out of the town for the weekend, so, could not respond before that.
Councillor Owen?
I move that the item six, uh, help me, Joanne.
What?
Six, one, A, be deferred until the next council meeting, so council can review the up-to-date information.
So, do we have a
Yeah, hold on, eight and six, one.
Did you, so, you had your hand raised, uh, Patrick, did you have a comment, or?
I won't be here November fifth, so if I just write a letter about my, uh, thoughts on that matter, do they get brought up, or do we keep deferring?
No. No. So, I have a motion that's moved by councillor Stacey White, seconded by councillor Rick Owen. The council approves the agenda for its regular meeting of October twenty-ninth, two thousand and nineteen, with item six, one, A to be deferred to November fifth, two thousand and nineteen.
All in favor?
Um, declaration of pecuniary interest? None declared. Petitions and delegations? None. Uh, acceptance of minutes and recommendations?
It's moved by councillor Dennis Perrier, seconded by councillor Stacey White. The council accepts the minutes of the following meetings. The Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee meeting held September twenty-fourth, two thousand and nineteen. The Kirkland Lake Public Library Board meeting held September twenty-sixth, two thousand and nineteen. The regular meeting of council held October fifteenth, two thousand and nineteen. The Economic Development Committee meeting held October seventeenth, two thousand and nineteen.
All in favor? Carrie?
Uh, item six, reports of municipal officers and communications, so, we'll go to item two, chief administrat, administrative officer.
At a recent, uh, meeting of council, we brought forward the community grant program, and at that time, I said I would be bringing forward a draft application form, uh, while I was waiting any kind of comments from council. In the meantime, council had had discussions with some user groups on, uh, matters that would impact on the community grant program, so I put together a report that, uh, tried to capture some of those concerns. Uh, unfortunately, when the agenda was put together, the report and the draft application form were separate documents, and it wasn't seen, so I just printed them off, I can go over them quickly. One of the, uh, points that, uh, was raised was the amount. The annual amount of twenty-five thousand dollars was recommended in the original community grant policy, and an allocation per application at five thousand dollars unless otherwise approved by council. Suggests that that particular clause be changed, that council will at a sole discretion establish an annual fund and not allocate an, a dollar amount that allows, uh, council the freedom to adjust according to the budget year. The, there is another item that, uh, comes forward repeatedly. We have, um, people that, maybe they're holding a, a, a raffle, but they're asking for, say, two or three passes. Well, our question, uh, to council is, do you want to bring an issue like two pass, two swim passes to the council table? One of the issues would be that, uh, by the time it hits the council table, well, the event may have already passed, and so we're asking for, um, a discretionary allocation of passes like that, not to exceed fifty dollars per request to a maximum of two thousand dollars annually, or forty incidents, and that we would report to you, so you know exactly where it stands within the budget. The third one, um, excuse me. Well, actually, it's, it's the same, I, I, I just changed, sorry, I just changed the wording to capture that, uh, so there's an additional wording underneath the contributions section. It would then read as, uh, follows, council authorizes the C A O or designate to approve the discretionary allocation not to exceed fifty dollars per request for facility passes, not to exceed an annual amount of two thousand dollars. C A O or designate shall provide a quarterly summary of request approvals to council. So, I'm proposing that those two, one clause be changed and the second clause be added to the community grants, uh, policy. The draft application form is based on, uh, similar forms from Trillium Foundation. Uh, we tried to keep it as simple as possible, but still capture the information that was requested in the policy itself. When the application form is sent out, the policy goes with it each time. And that's all.
Any comments, questions?
I have a motion that's moved by councillor Stacey White, seconded by councillor Dennis Perrier. The council accepts the community grant program policy and application form as presented by the acting chief administrative officer.
Before we vote, um, can I have a point of clarification?
Sure.
I had my hand up, but nobody saw it, so
Oh, I looked earlier, I
No, and it's fine, because I put my hand up late when, when you guys were looking down.
Okay.
Um, on the section, um, concerning the, uh, changing the total amount, did we leave a, a maximum amount per grant in there?
Uh, we left the, uh, maximum allocation per grant is five thousand dollars, unless otherwise directed by council.
Okay, that gives us, yes, okay, thank you. That's all I wanted to know, sorry.
Not a problem.
So, it's moved by councillor Stacey White, seconded by councillor Dennis Perrier. The council accepts the community grant program policy and application form as presented by the acting chief administrative officer.
All in favor? Carrie?
So, this was a request that came forward from, uh, Northern News, actually, the, uh, the person who does the delivery person for the, the yellow, or the flyers that come in the blue bags. Uh, Northern News now has done home delivery for their, their flyers. Um, as we all know, there's been some major problems in the wintertime with these blue bags being thrown all over the sidewalk. So, they have now put an implement, or implemented this plan for this, the winter months, where if there is snow on the road, they will not, if, if there's no plowing and the sidewalks haven't been plowed, and your, your driveway hasn't been plowed, they will not deliver at that point in time. So, what they're asking for is if they could please put a yellow, one of those yellow flyer containers on some, a corner or a sidewalk where it's fairly busy, that people can come and pick up, just because they won't be getting their, the delivery that they're used to. So, staff has looked at, um, at a few places, and, and we're suggesting that, uh, council allow that one of these yellow boxes be put, just at town hall at the bottom of the stairs, near the flagpole. Um, we have checked in with, with the roads department, and there is no problem when it comes to snow removal, it won't be much more than what they're already doing, so it's not that it's going to be a cost, and it will just be a service for the people, and hopefully it will take, take away some of the blue bags that are all over the place.
Councillor Ivanoff?
Yeah, no, I think it's a great idea. I think that's, uh, you know, it's a solution that we've been looking for. Uh, I don't know if it's gonna work a hundred percent, it may not, but, you know, it's at least worth the effort, and I think if they place some of these containers all around town, not just, uh, on, uh, down here by town hall, but on government road, in some places where, uh, they're a little bit out of the way, but, you know, that people aren't, uh, tripping over them, I think it'll be a great idea. I think that would certainly help, and, uh, would make, I know a lot of people want the advertising, and they wanna read a little bit about what's happening in the community, and that, uh, I think our paper's become a little more local than it ever has been, uh, so I think it's, uh, I think it's a great idea.
Okay, so I have a motion that's moved by councillor Dennis Perrier, seconded by councillor Stacey White. The council permits Northern News to place a yellow flyer container on the sidewalk by town hall.
All in favor? Carrie?
Um, item four, director of, uh, T P R, director of care, Nancy?
Um, so we're here tonight about our steam boiler. Um, so we have three air handling units that exchange the air on a continual basis. Um, in the winter months, the air is being tempered by heating, and it makes it very dry in the building. Um, the steam boiler is the only means of, uh, controlling the humidity by giving us humidity. Um, and it's got a crack in it, uh, and it has to be repaired. It cannot operate the way it is. Um, historically, we, um, always received our steam from the hospital, but about ten years ago, um, Dan realized some significant savings by putting in our own steam boiler, and it actually paid for itself, the capital purchased, pretty quickly, because of the amount of money that we were saving. Um, so, our options are, uh, so I'll go back to the budget implications. Um, so, it's gonna be seventy-two, um, hundred dollars plus the H, H S T portion, so, I get up with my glasses, seventy-three hundred and change. Um, I'll let Dan talk about, uh, potential savings.
The boiler is made of six-sectional section, your cast iron. It's only the middle section we gotta replace, uh, that is cracked, but to do that, to do so, you gotta remove all the section, that's why it's so, uh, labor-intensive, the gasket, the caulking to put it back together. So, uh, they're telling me it could still be under warranty, but first we gotta take it apart, break it, and make sure that it's not due to our water, and so, we're hoping for that part to be under warranty.
And that part is two thousand dollars, so there still is gonna be, it's still gonna require capital dollars irregardless. We're hoping that it'll be less, that we'll have the two thousand dollar savings, but we don't know until they actually start the work. Um, so the options are, um, to approve the repairs using levy dollars. Um, we also have the opportunity to use the infrastructure, um, capital reserve, uh, from previous projects that never saw the light of day, or to go back to purchasing steam from the hospital, which I highly do not recommend.
No, I think it's, uh, it has to be fixed, just, it has to be fixed, whether the dollars come from the levy or the capital reserve. I, I hope they come from the capital reserve. Uh, I think that would be, um, a place we can, uh, get the money from without increasing the levy, uh, but, you know, doesn't sound like it's a, it's an option, it has to be fixed.
What's the timeline to have it fixed?
Nobody in town wants to touch it, so I gotta work on that. Uh, it's gonna be done soon.
But it will be done in time?
Yeah.
Councillor Owen?
Yeah, I, there's, you know, like Eugene said, there's no two ways, but it's gotta be fixed, and like Eugene, I agree. Uh, I think it should come out of capital reserves. I mean, we have reserves there for emergency. We weren't planning on this breaking, and probably, in theory, it shouldn't have broken, but it did. Now it's gotta be fixed, so it makes sense to me to take it out of the reserve fund, that's why we have a reserve.
I have a motion that's moved by councillor Dennis Perrier, seconded by councillor Stacey White. The council approves an increase to the two thousand and nineteen capital budget in the amount of seven thousand two hundred and fifty dollars plus H S T for repairs to the Tech Pioneer steam, steam boiler, and that the amount be drawn from the, from the infrastructure capital reserves.
All in favor? Carrie?
Uh, next is manager planning inland development, Ashley?
My first report is a request to lease land at Forma Kelvey Avenue. This is a little different than a straight lease request that we would normally entertain. Uh, it sort of has, I guess, multiple, multiple, um, elements to it, uh, and it's relating to the work that we recently did on Omira, so, um, the Omira Boulevard reconstruction project, uh, we ended up having to put riprap, um, along the one side, because the slope was too high, we wouldn't have been able to maintain it with grass, uh, very effectively. So, riprap was installed, but due to the slope of that area, there's a need to throw in a fence or guide rail at the top of it to prevent anyone from being at the top and falling down. So, we looked at the costs associated with that, and we're looking at about fourteen hundred and fifty dollars just for material, and if we were going to contract the installation, uh, an additional twenty-five, or twenty-two fifty, uh, and then done internally, uh, sorry, ninety-five hundred if contracted, if it was internal, it's two thousand 9,500 if contracted, if it was internal, it's 2,250. So with that in mind, the neighbors had been approaching us with the intent to construct a privacy fence along the riprap, but by doing so, they're actually increasing the amount of square footage that they are using on their side of that fence, being town-owned land. In order to reduce the liability, we then recommend they go through a lease agreement. So the intent here is instead of, or sort of the arrangement we made with the owners and being presented to council tonight, is that we would give them the amount of money that we would have had to have any ways to purchase the material associated with the guide rails, the 1,450. We'd save the installation costs associated with that. So depending on whether it was internal or external, there's, there's a bit of a cost savings there. They would build the fence and then they'd be responsible for maintaining that fence for an ongoing basis. So there is annual revenue associated with the lease agreement of $138 and then increases subject about 2% per year or as, as we present the user fee by law. We will not have maintenance costs associated with the fence for the duration of the lease. There is a clause within the lease that there has to be a fence that stays there in order to protect us from those, I guess the regulations that we have imposed on us by the government. So it's a question to council on whether or not they want to proceed with this route or if they have other suggestions. The other thing I did want to mention was that you did receive a letter from the neighbors who were hoping to have the fees associated with the lease agreement establishment waived. I think it comes to, I can't remember how much it was. Yeah, about 550. Yeah. So happy to answer any questions you may have.
Councilor Owen?
Yeah. Ashley, that fence, I'm assuming would be built to standards set by Kirkland Lake and that we would be supervising or inspecting after it's built because there is a question of liability here. And there are fences and then there's fences that I build and you wouldn't want one that I built. So I'm just, I'm asking that. I'm not telling you to do that. I'm just asking if, if that's what was planned.
Telling me or are you asking?
No, I don't tell town employees what to do.
Okay.
I'm asking if that's in your plans to be done and suggesting it might be a good idea to Wolf.
We would ensure that it meets the requirements of those standards that are imposed by us.
Councilor Adams?
Yep, drove by the fence, looking really good. I'm actually in favor of what he has to say about having the fees waived. I'm in favor of that at the $500 presented. So because it comes down to liability and it's a little tit for tat and we're both helping each other. So I'm down for waiving the 500 and help him out. And it's a beautiful fence that's going in. Do we know all himself?
Correct me if I'm wrong, the fence is already up, right?
I didn't know that. That's news to me.
Yeah, I was gonna say, because I drove by, although I didn't see the no parking signs leaving work, so I'm questioning whether I saw the fence or not, but I'm pretty sure I saw a fence there yesterday.
No, I was not aware of the fence being up at this point, so that's news to me.
I hope we go take a look at it now to make sure it's just not held up by toothpicks or something.
Any more, Councilor Ivanoff?
No, I agree with, with Councilor Adams. I think we should waive the $500 and should be happy there's a fence there to reduce the potential liability to the town of Kirkland Lake.
You're still on deck?
Joanne, just a question. When it comes to the waiver of the fee, that would not be in the bylaws. Is that a separate resolution or?
I think so.
Okay, okay. Sorry, I just wanted to make sure that gets highlighted. The second one, good news, we're getting money. We've received a check for $2,087.30. I know it's not much, but it is extra that we weren't anticipating. And this has to do with the, it represents payments of our share of licenses and permit fees collected from aggregate producers in the town of Kirkland Lake. So all of the aggregate projects that we have been approving through zoning by law amendments has resulted in money coming to the town of Kirkland Lake. So the, this was a recent change in 2018 and it was adopted by Bill 39. They're now, I guess, handling permits and licenses the same way and it results in portions of these collected being distributed to municipalities. So what, what I'm asking at this point is where are we putting the money? So it's, at this point, or sorry, what they have recommended or what they say most other municipalities do is they put it towards road infrastructure projects. That is what I am recommending as well, that we put it in a reserve to be used for road infrastructure projects, but we're open to suggestions if council has any other alternatives they'd like to be considered. Speed bumps, sure.
If we just put that in our capital reserve, then it could be used for roads, right?
It's wherever council wishes to put it.
Yeah, but I'm, I'm just asking, if we put it in our capital reserve, it could be used for roads or we could use it for something else, right? Which would give us more flexibility as a council. So I would like to see it go into our, our capital reserve budget and then we can use it on a per needed basis. And it doesn't exclude it from being used for roads, but it, we need flexibility.
Any comments on, or? Councilor Adams?
Yep, certainly in favor of that. So would we have to like establish a road infrastructure fund to reserve fund?
I think, yeah, we'd have to do that if that's exactly where we'd want it directed. The other option is to, we're preparing a reserve and reserve fund policy and we're going to consider looking at what's currently, what we currently have reserves for and then establishing which ones we want to get rid of, merge, add with the 2020 budget. So we can always leave it in capital reserves for now and then consider relocating it with 2020 budget deliberations.
Oh yeah, I'm certainly in favor of that and to be moved later. I'm kind of interested in like how much money we get like this on a yearly basis and like, I don't know, just thinking about the banks and like those simply save programs we have, because we have that infrastructure improvement fund that's not going to fund itself. It's going to just be levy dollars every year. But if you take like 2% of all that money, right, it's just those little things that are just going to help us in the end. So capital until we figure out our reserves.
Councilor Ivanoff?
Ashley, can you kind of explain this aggregate money that we get? Is it like, is it, is this like, we're going to expect 3,000 bucks a year? Is it something we're gonna?
So this is one of two, sorry, I think the 2018, we're only getting this one, but in 2019, we're supposed to get two payments a year. So I don't know whether...
So it's just going to be a small amount? It's not going to be like, we're not going to get a hundred grand or 200 grand or 500 grand or a million bucks?
It depends on how much is being taken out of the ground. So it's, it's sort of similar to how mines have to pay the provincial, they get bonus, I don't know what it's called.
So is this like a Kirkland Lake gold thing? Is this like?
No, this is specific to aggregate. So it's, it's just, it's Caldwell, it's Peterson, it's, Kale Gold does have an aggregate pit on their property, it would be from that. But the, it's not for gold. It's not from gold.
Thank you.
Councilor Owen?
Do we not get a percentage of what they're charged by the province per ton, right? So it's, it's like a royalty on a, on a mining claim. You know, it's 3%. The province takes probably 2.5% of that and we get a half percent. So yeah, that's what I thought, because here it says license fee, but we're also looking at a tonnage fee as well. So we would get a small, and, and the fee that they pay on the tonnage is very low to start with, so.
I have a motion that's, a motion that's moved by Councilor Dennis Perier, seconded by Councilor Stacy White. The council approves the funds received from the Aggregates Resources Trust to be dedicated towards the capital reserve until a reserve and reserve fund policy is implemented and accepted by council.
All in favor? Carrie? Introduction reading and consideration of bylaws.
It's moved by Councilor Stacy White, seconded by Councilor Dennis Perier. Hold on, sorry, can I just go back to, so that everybody can see. The bylaw 19-013, being a bylaw to authorize mayor and clerk to execute a lease agreement for land at Fort McKelvey Avenue, waiving the administration fees, be read a first, second, and third time and acted and passed.
All in favor? Carrie?
It's moved by Councilor Dennis Perier, seconded by Councilor Stacy White. The bylaw 19-104, being a bylaw to name members to various committees of council, adding members to the Kirkland Lake Youth Council Committee, be read a first, second, and third time and acted and passed.
All in favor? Carrie? Item A, questions from council to staff?
There were none this week.
Nine notices, notice of motion? Number 10, confirmation bylaw?
It's moved by Councilor Stacy White, seconded by Councilor Dennis Perier. The bylaw 19-105, being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of council at its meeting held October 29th, 2019, be read a first, second, third time and acted and passed.
All in favor? Carrie? Counselors' reports. Councilor Adams?
Yep, council pretty much discovered around the same time as the public that the volunteer fire department had unionized. It turned out there was conversations between the mayor and the CAO and the volunteers at that time. It just would have been nice if we would have known about that ahead of time, because typically when unions come in, it's a breakdown of communication. If it had been an in-camera meeting, it would have just been, I'd say here, blank, but it's just kind of upsetting that we weren't involved and knowing that there was a breakdown, because certainly as our role of council, we are to implement policies and measure and hold senior members accountable. So it just would have been nice to know about how things were going on that.
The, there was no indication that that was going to be happening. They did have a previous organization come forward to represent them, but then we found out that they weren't representing them. The conversation itself, we had briefed with the organization, we had reached basically what we thought were terms. So this came out of nowhere. We actually had, I think it was four hours or something to respond to it. It came at that point, at that fast. But our apologies, we should have brought that forward, but again, there was no indication that this would happen.
No reports? Okay. So, just, motions, okay. Motion to adjourn?
Moved by Councilor Dennis Perier, seconded by Councilor Stacy White. The council adjourns its regular meeting of October 29th, 2019 to an in-camera meeting pursuant to Section 239.2 of the Municipal Act to discuss one issue concerning an identifiable person.
All in favor? Carrie?